Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the first of two November Boards, zoning Board of Adjustment meetings here in Concord. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say I will call the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. We will ask the appellant to come forward, be seated in the chairs to my right, be sworn in, and to offer us whatever testimony they would like us to hear. We ask that the appellants confine their testimony to a 10-minute interval if at all possible. There is also a sign-up sheet. We ask that everyone who testifies jot down their name and address on that so that our records are complete and accurate. Following the appellant's testimony, we will invite anyone in the audience who is in favor of the appeal to come forward, and following that, anyone in the audience who is in opposition to the appeal. Normally, we request that those people testifying from the audience confine their testimony to five minutes. Following that testimony, we check in with code enforcement to see if there's any comment from their office, and in the event that anything has come up that seems to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new evidence, prior to our closing the public testimony of the hearing. Normally, we will act on each case before we move forward on to the next. There are two cases this evening where the appellants have requested that their cases be recessed until a later date, so we'll deal with those first so that anyone here who is, has an interest in those cases can go home and spend their evening doing something other than listening to the zoning board drone on and on. The first case that has requested a continuance is case number 0101, 5 Pine Street, Neighborhood Residential District. Do I hear a motion to continue this case, to recess this case until our regular December meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The second case that has requested a continuance is case 0108, 30 River Road, R.O., Open Space Residential District, Shoreland Protection District, and Flood Hazard District overlays. Do I hear a motion to continue this case to our next regular meeting?
So moved.
To November 8?
No.
To December 6.
To the December meeting, yes, which is what I intended on the first one. I assumed that was the, consistent with the motion.
We've already got cases for December 6, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn this case or to recess this case till December 6?
I move that we recess this case until December.
And is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. That means that cases 0108 and 0101 will not be heard this evening. They will be heard approximately one month from now. And that brings us to our first case that we will be hearing this evening, which is case 0104, 13 Courier Road. This is in an open space residential district. Kimberly Ray and Anthony Bailey are the owners of the property, and the applicants wish to construct a second dwelling unit attached to a new garage. The applicant seeks variances to Article 28-24J Table of Principal Uses to allow use A2, two-family dwellings, and Article 28-52 duplex or two-family dwelling to allow a two-family dwelling on a lot with no road frontage where 300 feet Swear to tell the truth and nothing but? Thank you. Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Kimberly Bailey.
Anthony Bailey.
What would you like us to know? Why do you feel a variance is appropriate in this case?
So, the intention with the construction of this addition is for an in-law apartment. We understand that it doesn't meet the criteria for that due to the size and an abutting wall to the current living space of our current home, so therefore, we don't meet all the requirements of this two-family dwelling, but the intention is not for this to be rented or anything of that nature. It's just for an in-law apartment.
Is there anything about the particular characteristics of your property that require a variance here?
So, we don't have any road frontage. The, I've actually got some pictures here to share with you guys if you'd like them, but the property, you can see the picture, oops, sorry. 24 by 36 is the proposed addition. It's set back 52 feet from our property line, and there's not a lot of property between us and the road. It's kind of a unique configuration with how the properties were split up. We also have close to six acres, and so it's not an impediment to any of our neighbors. It's nowhere near anybody, but if I could share these pictures, you'll be able to better see.
Thank you.
There's two sets there.
One of the, one of the parts of your design, elements of your design that's prompted your visit with us tonight is the size of the unit. In other words, if it were a little smaller, it could qualify as an ADU, and the requirements would be different. Can you tell us why it needs to be the size that you'd like it to be?
That's the size my parents would like it to be, understanding that 750 is really intended for the city of Concord, which is mostly in-town living, not more rural where we are. I also understand that the Board is looking into making that bigger anyway, that allowance.
Unfortunately, the Board doesn't control that.
Or whomever, whoever controls that.
There is a new ordinance under consideration that would adjust those numbers.
However, it is very close to the acceptable size within...
How big was it?
Was it, how many square feet?
864 square feet.
Yeah.
100 square feet more than permissible, approximately.
24 by 36.
So, you've got, obviously, a lot of land. Is there anything in particular about the land that kind of leads to that specific square footage number, or is that just kind of the design?
Again, it was the footprint that her parents were requesting for adequate space, and this is really what they were targeting.
Where's, question mark?
Yeah.
Where's the septic system on the property?
The septic is behind the house. It's on the backside.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there any grade to the?
Are these all the same picture?
One of the other issues is that there's not doorway between the two units. If you built it on the other side of the house rather than to the garage, would it be in the setback?
It would, it would be too close to our abutting neighbor.
Right, so it would create, it would create a whole other problem.
A whole other problem. We'd be here for a different variance.
Right. The garage net setback and the proposed ADU need setback as well. There is a door connecting the garage to the proposed unit so that they can access the...
So, you could leave your house, go through the garage, and get into the new unit?
Correct.
So, unbeknownst to you, we've seen a series of similar requests, and one of the issues that comes up is if, if an ADU was allowed, it would be a requirement that at least one of the units always be owner occupied. So, it doesn't have to be family that lives there, but it would be, it would be a condition of the permanent use going forward. You know, even if you sold it, it couldn't be entirely rented out. One unit would have to be owner occupied. Are you comfortable with that being a condition? That would be a permanent condition for this variance?
We don't have any intentions of renting it out at all, so yes, for resale, that's fine with us. That's what you mean.
Yeah. Yeah. You could technically rent it out. You just, at least one of the units would have to be owner occupied, meaning...
We would live in our house.
Whoever owned it would have to live in, yeah, you got it.
Or the, the next person could own it, live in the ADU, and rent out the house. It could be either way.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Jim?
No.
Andrew?
No.
Brenda?
No, good, yeah.
Anything else you'd like us to know? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward.
Yes.
May we have your name for the record, please?
Jeffrey S. Newman.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Newman?
I live at 15 Courier Road. When this property was divided up by Abbott of the Abbott Downing, Coachworks, he divided a 41-acre lot into a bunch of very weird slices. Tony's my neighbor, and he's got about six acres, but he has a very narrow road footage, because my property, adjacent to it, comes down to a very narrow triangle, and I share 900 feet, roughly, of the back line with him, and I have 880 feet of road footage. I have no objection at the end of my property for him to build this addition. As far as I'm concerned, since it's his in-laws moving in, we regard as one family, and we look forward to meeting them. He's a great neighbor. These people are good for their word, and I can attest that in the six, seven years I've lived next to him, I've never had a complaint. He's always been very respectful. He does good work, and I know that they put the bottom down for the garage already. It's visible from the road, and I see no reason why this shouldn't be finished, but as far as him not having 350 feet of road footage, because I own most of the road footage directly in front of his house by virtue of how they originally carved up this property. So, it's kind of an anomaly to have a property of all that size, come down to a narrow piece, then have the footage in front of it owned by the neighbor, but that's me. And he's been very cooperative in helping us with that end of the property. I've got no objection to them moving and, moving his in-laws in. I don't see it as a negative. I see it as a positive, and at a time when we are quite simply running out of some of the affordable housing in this area, it seems entirely logical to me to have that. I mean, I've got a grown daughter who might be moving back in with me at some point, but, you know, that's, that's just the way life is right now. So, I've got no objections to this. I don't believe our neighbor across the street has any, but I would have to, Tom, I would have to say he would have to speak for himself, but we're, we're basically all happy with, with Bailey as a neighbor, and I'm very happy with Tony and Kim putting on this addition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
Not at this time.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request to construct what amounts to an ADU, but because of its size, it would be considered a, creating a second dwelling unit, a duplex. We also have a request for a forgiveness on frontage. We heard testimony that the configuration of the lot essentially makes frontage impossible in this arrangement. We also heard testimony that the size of the unit springs from the appellant's desire to have a unit that size. So, I'll start the discussion with Nick. How do you see this one?
I'm pretty much persuaded that this meets all the requirements for granting a variance.
Which one now? Are we on frontage or are we on the?
On both.
Okay.
I think certainly the shape of the lot speaks to itself in terms of creating a hardship. I think we're only talking a little over 100 square feet larger than an ADU is required. I don't see values of surrounding properties being diminished by this, and I think certainly substantial justice would be done by granting this.
Are you, okay. Jeff?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it meets the spirit of the ADU. Applicant was right. There's some serious consideration given to not limiting it to 750 square feet. It's only a little bigger. And then with regard to the common access, I think you can't achieve it, because if the, the ADU or the new dwelling unit were built on the other side of the house, it would create a new set of issues with regard to the setback, so.
Good. Andrew?
I agree, and I, if a motion is made, I would suggest that we add the condition that the one unit always be owner occupied, because I do think if they were both to be rented out, that would, would change the character of the neighborhood, but as long as that condition is there, I think it's a reasonable use for the reasons that were already said.
Brenda?
And I agree with Andrew with the addition of adding that owner occupied one unit.
I see no reason to argue with my colleagues on this one. Would anyone care to make a motion?
So, I'll move approval.
It's been moved with the condition?
With the condition...
For both variances.
Yes.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
Tracy, do you have all the information you need?
I do, thank you.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variances are granted. You're welcome. Next case this evening is case 0106, 79 Warren Street, which is in an RN Neighborhood Residential District. Brian Vile and Lynn Vinskis are the owners. They wish to reconstruct a dilapidated carport slash garage on the existing footprint and seek variances to Article 28-85B continuation of non-conforming structures to allow the expansion of a non-conforming structure, and Article 28-4-1 dimensional standards to allow an expansion of an attached garage approximately one foot from the side parcel line where 10 feet are required. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
Would you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
Brian Vile, owner.
Lynn Vinskis, owner.
What would you like us to know?
Yeah, basically, we have a existing large two-car carriage house garage that the previous owners added a carport to on the right edge. It's become dilapidated over the years. The support roof beam is collapsing, and for safety's sake and aesthetic's sake, we would like to just have that torn down and rebuilt. The original intention was to rebuild the structure that also has a small overhang on the right edge of it. My understanding was that that overhang would be included in part of the footprint of the existing structure, which would allow us to utilize that for building purposes. So, on the right edge where that overhang is, we would just wall that in so we can have internal storage added to the structure. In no way are we intending to encroach past the existing boundaries of the structure with the footprint. In your packets, number three, image number three, is really a sightline directly with the survey I just had completed, which is approximation, as you can see those two wooden beams on the far right, were edge-to-edge on the property next to us. So, again, we're not looking to encroach past that in any way. It's really just enclosing that portion right there that's exposed to weather.
So, if I'm following you, you're saying that, is that, the overhang is presently there?
Yes.
It's presently there. We, we use it as, it's our only pretty much available space in our, on our property to put dump pile stuff, you know, like when we, so we use it for that. We would like to be able to just put some doors on it so our neighbor doesn't have to look at our stuff until we can get a truck, but it's there already. So, you can kind of see we have some stuff built up there. We'd like to just put, like, some sliding doors on it, keep, keep what's there, but just make that be so you can't see it, like you can't see inside it.
So, the plan is to take down the current structure, just kind of restructure it so it's all enclosed?
Yeah, and the roof right now is completely flat. It's unsafe. I go up there and I shovel it because I, he's too, I don't want him to go up there. He's too heavy. I'm lighter, so I go up there and I shovel it in the winter. So, the roof would be slanted, you know, to kind of just be safer, yeah. So, it just, it looks, it's an eyesore. The floor, the concrete floor is coming up. It's like...
It's broken up.
Broken up and everything.
Other questions from the Board?
Do you know what year it was built?
You know, I don't. It was, I mean, I bought the house in September 2001, and it was kind of awful then, but now I'm at the point where we have some means to fix it.
That's probably somewhere around 1900.
Yeah, I mean, the house, the house itself was 1892. I mean, the, so, the, I would assume the main carriage house part is around then, and I have no idea when the actual this thing was added.
Did you just highlight it for the photo?
Yeah, it's lime green.
Yeah, not if you painted that color.
No, it'll be white.
Any other questions from the Board? Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
We do share a driveway with our neighbor. They have access. We, you know, we, it's an easement that they can use that. This won't encroach on that any, at all either, so we're not going to make, make it more difficult for them to use our driveway or park in their driveway or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Tracy, when does a building become a building?
When it has walls. So, this is basically a overhang on the building.
Yeah.
So, putting a foundation on this similar to the rest of the garage and enclosing it...
Yeah.
Makes it, makes it a expansion of the... makes it a, makes it a expansion of the non-conformity. It's similar to when we take a deck and make it a three-season porch, we had one of those recently.
Yeah.
The deck extended to the same point on the setback, but enclosing that and adding to it makes it an expansion. And in case law, this is kind of, it's left to the discretion sometimes because it depends on the degree of intensity of what it's adding is how the case law goes. And so sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't, depending on what the situation is. So with this being so close to the line, right now it's just a building overhanging, it's going to be completely enwalled and become, become part of the building. It seems to me that that's more of an intensity on the neighbors. And going from a deck to a three-season porch is more of an intensity on the neighbors because you have walls that weren't there before. So that's how staff has looked at it in the past. Like I said, case law goes both ways.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks very much.
Yep. I'll just add, I mean, if it's, I don't know if it's all or nothing, but we're open to just keeping it like it is, but we would like to have that enclosure. But, you know, if what's there is there, then that's fine too.
Very good, thank you.
Question, just, the overhang now, is there a slab under it? Is it concrete or dirt or?
I don't think the slab extends from the carport out.
Yeah, I think it might just be rock, crushed rock, dirt, like overgrown stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hutton, they would, even if they abandoned the overhang and just rebuilt the garage portion, they would still need a variance, right? Because they'd be, they wouldn't be expanding it, but if they, if they reconstruct an existing dilapidated.
It's only a portion of it though, because this is connected to the carriage house.
Oh, so it would be, that would not, because it would be considered renovation, not a rebuild? Okay.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Would you sign in, please? May we have your name for the record?
My name's Molly Rossignol.
What would you like us to know?
Brian and Lynn are awesome neighbors. I live at 81 Warren Street, I share their driveway. We, Brian does most of the snow blowing. I'll do it when they're away. My concern with the enclosure of the overhang is that I have a very small driveway. And when I, I have to do about a four-point turnaround. And my concern is there are times when my car actually has to almost like go over into that portion. And if there's a wall there, I'm very concerned that I'm going to find it nearly impossible to get out of my driveway. I have a two-car garage at 81, and I can't get two cars into my driveway as it is. So.
Any questions from the board?
Can we see that on the satellite?
Yeah, I'm trying to get a sense of the shared driveway.
There is a photo that I think catches a little bit of the driveway.
It shows you where the other garage is.
Says sightline of property boundary, one of one.
It's picture number two.
So 79 is on the right here, and 81 is on the left.
Okay.
So.
Can you go up there and just show us how you would maneuver into your garage from the road?
Well, I will say I can't even get into my garage because my, oh, so.
Yeah, just show me on the map.
This is the driveway that I come in, this is Brian and Lynn's house. So I come in here, I go from here, and then my driveway is here. And this is my, I think, this is my garage. My driveway is here, this is where the, where that overhang is. I'm unable to get into my garage because the driveway is so narrow there that if I want to, I do like a four-point turn and back in. I'm planning on getting a much smaller car when I need a new car. No joke.
So you have an easement?
Yeah, it's deeded the way the house was built.
So by turning, so by using a portion of their property to turn around, that, like, it probably is allowed?
I use my driveway, well, yeah, I mean, if my, the nose of my car goes into the.
You're talking about like by inches?
By inches.
But that probably is included in your easement, right? Because you're allowed to use it to cut through?
I mean, their driveway?
Yeah, you're using.
Yeah, I can use their driveway, but I try to turn around in my driveway. If I drive in front first, which is what I do, and then I back out, I do like a three or four-point turn so that I can drive straight out.
Got it, okay.
But as I go forward sometimes, it, you know, I have to be very careful about not hitting the posts, but I occasionally use, go inches over into the.
Into the open part of there?
Right.
Yeah, sounds challenging.
Kind of precarious.
Other questions from the board? No? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Hello?
Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
May we have, please sign in, and would you also give us your name for the record as you testify?
My name is Joe Blockmer, and I live at 73 Warren Street.
My name is Merle Thorpe, I live at the same address, 73 Warren Street.
What would you like us to know?
Relation to this?
We are an abutter to the property. It's not much of an abutment distance, we're in the far back corner.
Sorry. There you go. You should be this one here.
And the abutting distance here, this is the carriage house, the older carriage house with the additional shed addition here. I guess the distance from the shed to the property line is about one foot. And the neighbor here has their fence and two trees right behind that shed addition extension to the one-story building. And we're worried that.
You can see that in one of the photographs in the file?
We're worried that if, we understand that the addition will require a slab if they want to enclose it. And to do that, you bring it to frost depth, and that would probably put those two trees in jeopardy that are on this person's property here. This, what, two years ago, who owns this property here, got a variance for this garage and they needed a little wider, so they brought their garage a little closer to the lot line. We have a woodlands garden in here that we've spent quite a bit of time establishing. We've lost a number of trees here on this property here. And if we lose these, there's very little shade to this entire precinct of the property here. So we're concerned that if they do the excavation for a slab shed, it would kill those trees and that would eliminate all the trees in that area. There's just a lot of construction in that area, in that joint between these properties. Is there anything else, Joe?
Well, and just to explain a little bit more, the impact of the loss of trees, as the climate continues to change, trees obviously become increasingly important, not only as a CO2 absorber, but just cooling in this dense residential area. And also, if the trees were lost or became ill, that would impact the runoff to us. This is a downhill slope, so whatever comes through this very narrow area between, in this picture I'm looking at, can you show the other? Yeah, this picture.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the property line, and we're, and this actually is on a slant about like.
I'd say probably a drop of eight or nine inches.
So it increases the runoff, which is already an issue to us, down the hill for us. We're not impacted visually by the building itself, but the excavation necessary is likely to really damage those trees, which is of concern to us. I'm not sure if there's any way you can do it without damaging the trees. Am I right that there would be a slab poured there?
Is it, we'll ask, we'll ask the appellant to come back and clarify that.
Okay, okay.
There, my understanding is there's an existing slab that I think they're, we'll ask them, I think they're going to continue to use, but then they would be adding a small additional foundation for the.
Yeah, I thought I heard her say it was dirt, but anyway, clarification would be helpful for us on that, yeah. Yeah. And I don't know if similarly, it's unclear to me whether there would be also changes in the foundation to the garage, the op, it's, it's.
It's bay.
The bay, yeah, which you can see in one of these photographs. I guess the one right in front of that, the one in green. I don't know what the plans are for a foundation there, but if the foundation were changed, that would make the problem even worse because of the back of that being so close to the line and damaging those trees, which are not on their property, on that property.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Any comments from code enforcement?
Not at this time.
Very good.
I just, I had a question. So just remind me again the question that came to you before we started. If they don't enclose that, then they have the right to just improve that in any.
Right, it's the foundation and the enclosure that makes it need a variance. If they were just replacing the posts and, you know, slanting the roof so that they get some snow relief, that's fine as maintenance and repair. It's the enclosure and, you know, incorporating it into the rest of the garage.
But if the whole garage needed to get torn down and rebuilt exactly as it is, would they still need a variance?
With this open carport, that would be fine.
They could do that.
Yeah, they just, right, because this is part of a bigger structure, so it's only the maintenance and repair of this portion of the carriage house.
That's what I thought, because they thought as long as a certain portion of the original structure was there.
Right, so Andrew, if I may, if you look at this picture here, so this whole carriage house is part of this, so this is only a portion of the structure that is this little garage. And then this is the, up here is the open carport portion. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As opposed to the common type of case we get where.
They're tearing the whole thing down.
That would require variance if it's into the setback or, yeah.
Right. So even if we say no to the variance, they could still take this whole thing off and restructure the whole thing as long as they do it exactly the way it currently exists?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I just want to be sure.
Would that go as far as if even replacing the foundation on that portion, or that?
That doesn't have a foundation, the carport doesn't have a foundation.
Oh, the car, the whole carport doesn't have it?
It has concrete.
The garage portion of the, it does, the open portion does not have a foundation per se.
It's only crushed stone.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
So if they redo it exactly the way it is from start, scratch to finish, then.
Exactly the same, they could replace because it's part of the bigger structure and this would be repair and maintenance.
Could they put a partial wall, like just on the back?
I don't think that was the goal.
I could tell by the expression on her face with the answer to that question.
At some point, we're splitting hairs.
Yeah.
It's eight inches tall.
But, sorry, did.
That's okay.
You're saying if they, if they tear down that portion and rebuild it, that's fine because on the same fat, what if they, I guess maybe we can just ask them, but from the last, the last people were talking about if they were going to re, if they needed to rebuild that whole foundation in the current carport?
If the currently enclosed portion was, that foundation was being replaced, because there already is a foundation there, that would be permitted?
It would, yeah.
Yes, they're right, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Very good. Mr. Bile, Ms. Vinskis, would you like to offer factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
Yeah, just one thing I want to add. We were given two options for the floor, the concrete pad, because I'm out of my depth when it comes to this, so I seek professional advice. The first one was a full-blown frost wall that would require major excavation, both sides of the border that the pad would occupy. Those trees would be removed, et cetera. We said, all right, that can happen, because I.
They're for the trees too, we would like.
We're all for the trees. I totally agree with the previous testimony that those should be retained at all costs. The second concept we received for the pad was 12-inch diameter concrete pilings. I think there's seven in total. They just go around the perimeter of the pad, and then the pad would be laid on top of this. So the pilings would add support for the structure on top of it. Therefore, there's no frost wall bordering it to a three or four-foot depth. So we're trying to seek the least invasive solution to get the pad in, to replace what was there without eliminating trees or violating fences or property lines.
Because we were, we were told basically they can't fix the concrete pad that's there. It's so old and just kind of falling apart, they can't just skim it or, you know, to level it off.
You mean for the entire car, garage?
So for that, the highlighted green part?
Yeah.
The carriage house is different, it actually has space underneath it and there's wood and there's all sorts of. So this part is the only part that has like a concrete slab, but that, the part you drive in is a concrete slab that's just falling apart. So we want to get that replaced. We understand if that part's not already a concrete thing now, we understand that that's expanding. But the inside part does have a concrete slab, and we sought out options that would be the least invasive because we like those trees too. They provide blocking from our back neighbors with their fence and their new addition they have. So we like that too. So that's the goal, not to encroach on any of that stuff.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Sorry, I do, I'm sorry. We were talking about the trees, but what do you, what do you make of the other neighbor's concern about needing some, just a smidge of that open space to turn her car around?
Molly's a great neighbor too. I would say, I would say someone who bought that house knows, knew the, knew the situation. I get it. So it's not a hardship on us if we don't put a door on that. It was honestly to make it nicer to look at for everybody. So, I know, if she doesn't mind looking at some junk that sits there for a little while until we get a truck to haul it out, then I understand that.
Yeah, I guess the main thing we would just make sure we get clarity on is if the slab with, you know, the original rectangular slab with the carwood park, if the portion outside under those metal, that overhang with those wooden beams, if that's considered a separate area and by pouring concrete there would be expanding, then again, we're willing to move forward without that expansion and just replace what was there.
Yeah, we would just like to have, we have what we have, but make it nicer.
Well, it sounds like you could do that without, without a variance.
Yeah, and if that's the case, then.
That'd be good news.
That's, I mean.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request to rebuild a section of a carriage house that's in tough shape, and we heard, and it requires a variance because of enclosing, request to enclose a certain. request to enclose a certain space that's now not enclosed. We heard testimony of, from the neighbors that there was a concern about maneuvering in an adjacent driveway and about the future of some trees, which are immediately to the rear of the building. I want to start this one at Brenda's end of the table.
So, yeah, I was inclined to approve it. However, I can understand the neighbor's concerns, which is why I wanted to be so detailed in my clarification with Dr. Tracy that they can absolutely tear down this section, rebuild it exactly as it is so that it's new and clear and in good shape and not be impeded by, you know, any of the, any decision we make on that enclosure if we decide not to approve it. I mean, I don't have a measurement of the driveway to know for sure how difficult that is to maneuver, to know whether we can't approve that or not because I don't have a measurement of the neighbor's driveway. But I can understand that, I'm sure with snow, it could be difficult, I guess.
Andrew.
So as far as the trees, the way I'm thinking about it, although I certainly would, would, you know, be interested in what other people have to say, is it's, it's a totally understandable and valid concern of the neighbors, but I'm thinking it's not really fundamentally a zoning issue because if, if they disrupt roots on their side that ultimately kills trees on their neighbor's property, I should know this, but I don't, I think they're, they probably could be liable. You know, civilly, potentially big liability. So they would, you know, would definitely want to be strongly researching that before they start messing around with the roots of someone else's tree. But I don't, you know, so I think there would be a remedy for that. It's not really a use or a zoning issue. As far as the other neighbor turning, I was, I, I don't think my questions were that artful, but I, if, I mean, she doesn't really have any, any grounds if she, if she's using their property to turn around her car, which I could understand why she would. I don't think anyone could complain over a couple inches, but she doesn't exactly have any right to do that unless the easement would allow her into their property to, to get in and out, in which case she might. So I'm inclined to, to sort of agree with the applicant that the neighbor, it's, it's a tight spot and it's an unfortunate situation, but she is kind of unnoticed, that's what it's going to be. But I also would be curious what other people will say about that. So I'm kind of leaning towards approving it, but I would want to hear what other people will say.
Yeah, like Andrew, I was curious to review the easement, but that's really not our job to do that. For me, this looks like it's, they're rebuilding the garage and expanding it to become a bigger garage by closing in the section. And so it's going to become non, more non-conforming. And I really didn't see anything unique with the property or where there may be any sort of a hardship that would require to do that. There's some convenience and aesthetics, but I'm not sure that that meets the test that's before we start. And there's a lot going on in that small piece of property in a very dense neighborhood. So I think as these things come to us, if there's an opportunity for things to become more conforming, we should try to get there.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Jim on, on that. Also, I don't think that if they were to build this, rebuild this, that it would impact any, any additionally on the abutters' ability to access their, their parking arrangement.
Okay. Of the two concerns, essentially, I see the, the, it becoming a building because it has a wall around it to be the distinction without a difference. That may be the rule, but it doesn't really strike me as a true expansion of the, of the building. I know it is technically. So my, from my point of view, that would temper my demands as far as the configuration of the lot, et cetera. The, the lot is as it is and the structure is where it is, and there's not much they can do about that. The question of the trees, I think Andrew was right that it's probably not in our bailiwick. How, how the building is constructed and whether that causes injury to the neighbors is not something that the zoning board really can pronounce on. That's something that owners would have to deal with in the building inspector. The question of turning around in the driveway, there are posts right now that are approximately where I expect the wall would be. I think you're pretty much obliged to turn around in your own driveway. And, or the space that's allocated to you. I realize that the, the two driveways are, are shared, or the driveway is shared, but there is a property line there. So I don't, I wouldn't consider that to be something that should prohibit or should induce us to deny the variance. So all in, I would be inclined to approve the request, although I did hear the appellant say that effectively they'd be willing to do what they can do anyway. So I guess I'll have to leave it to my fellow board members to examine their own thoughts on that, but that's...
Just got a quarter.
Yeah, so I, I, I would vote in favor, I would vote in favor of a motion to, to approve. Is there a motion to do anything? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny.
All right. And is there a second? A thunderous silence. Does the motion fail for lack of a second? Is there another motion?
I'll, I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. You rescued me from a very long evening. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance. The rationale for the benefit of, of the record is what?
I think that Jim makes a worthy point. But I think what, what in my mind makes this a hardship not to, a hardship and, and a reasonable use is the fact that along the lines of what Chris was saying, it's, it's already outlined as a, it already has a number of posts and a, and a roof. So the walls is, the existing structure essentially creates the hardship that they should be allowed to essentially replicate it with just adding walls, which is a fairly minimal change, in my view.
Very good. Anything else that, any points you need covered on that?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? For a tiny little building, it's a complicated question. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
No.
The vote is four to one. With Mr. Monahan in the minority, the variance is granted. It doesn't mean you have to use it, but it's granted. Okay. The next question then, or excuse me, the next case is case 0110, 200 Sheep Davis Road in the IN Industrial District, RO Open Space Residential District. It spans two districts.
30 River?
30 River was with...
Oh, okay, that one just was still here.
Yeah.
Where was I? Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
RO Open Space District and an industrial, IN Industrial District. The property is, is, is transected by the zoning boundary line. And the Shoreland Protection Overlay District is also involved. Sabo and Company Incorporated owner. And seeks variances to Article 2823E to allow outdoor storage to extend 315 feet into the Open Space Residential District where 40 feet is permitted. Article 28537D, maximum area of lot to be used or designated for outside storage, to permit the outside storage in excess of the 1.3 to 1 ratio of outside storage to gross floor area permitted to allow storage of 266,500 square feet, where 68,250 square feet would be allowed. Article 28537B, screening requirements to permit use of existing natural vegetative screening. And Article 28537C, buffer for residential districts and offices within industrial IN districts to permit the use of existing natural vegetative buffers. Gentlemen, swear to tell the truth and nothing but...
I do.
I do.
Did you sign in?
Yes, we did.
You did.
Thank you. Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
I'm Chris Netto with Novus Group.
I'm Ian Bedard from Rand's Wire and Spelman on behalf of the applicant.
What would you like us to know?
So representing Sabo, which is the parent company of Phoenix Precast, which y'all may know is located at 77 Regional Drive. The property at 200 Sheep Davis Road is about 34 acres. And Phoenix is proposing to relocate their, completely relocate their facility to this site. So they would move everything over from a very crowded site at Regional Drive over to this much larger parcel on Sheep Davis Road. So again, the property's 34 acres, it's a former gravel pit, so it's an underutilized, abandoned or undeveloped industrial property on the edge of the city of Concord. Sabo is proposing to build two 25,000-square-foot buildings and a 2,500-square-foot office for the manufacturing of precast structures. With that, you know, some uniqueness with the property. If I may approach...
Please.
Ronnie, the South Cook Route 106, Sheep Davis Road is here on the left. South Cook River runs along the entire southern and eastern boundary of the property. Along with that, there's a 75-foot conservation easement along the edge of the river, all the way around the boundary of the property. So the conservation easement can't be used for, for anything other than basically leaving the buffer that's there now. To the north, we're bound by EJ Prescott, which is industrial sales for contractors and the state facility for fire. I think they, they test airplane fires or training facility. The site is actually bisected by the, the industrial zone, which is in this area, this side of the red line. The other side is all in the residential open district. So sort of a, an island of industrial land within the residential open district. So with that, we're asking, we're requesting a variance to actually extend into the RO district more than the 40 feet that's allowed under the zoning ordinance to as much as 315 feet into the RO district. We're also asking for a variance for outside storage to allow more than the 1.3 to 1 ratio. So basically, we're allowed 1.3 times the building's square footage. We're allowed to have that much outdoor storage. We're asking for more than that at 266,500, which is about a 5 to 1 ratio. And that's just the uniqueness of the, of the business, where they manufacture precast structures. They have to have a large inventory. They have to have curing time before they can ship the product, so it needs to sit on the site. The only other option for that would be to build an enormous building to house all of the, the precast that they, that they make. So again, uniqueness of the property. This is sitting in a, in a big bowl that's barely visible from Route 106, unless you look right down the driveway. We have the conservation easement along most of the south and east boundaries, which is buffered with trees and the river. So it's very well screened and, and that's, that's really it as far as the site. Attorney Bedard, I don't, I don't know if you have anything to add as far as the criteria for the variances?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. The, to extend into the RO zone, the 40-foot, the RO zone is slightly larger than the industrial use here. But if you take into consideration the conservation easement, the industrial portion of this overwhelms the RO zone with respect to it. And it gets even worse when you start figuring into 100-year floodplain and the Shoreland Protection District here. So the RO zone really does not have a good suitable residential use that it can be used for. The use of a little piece of that RO zone for outdoor storage is about as much use you're going to be able to do with most of that in as least non-impactful a manner on that RO property via V, the river, and all the other overlay districts there with it. So we're talking about, the only things being used in that RO zone is outdoor storage and a little corner of the parking lot. With respect to our request for additional outdoor storage, if we were to try and comply with the zoning, not only would you have a huge building there, but you'd have a much larger parking lot. You'd have more impervious surface than you're getting out of this here by virtue of that, as well as additional complications with respect to stormwater management and things like that that make this more complicated than it needs to be. And one of the nice things about the Phoenix PreCast facility being here is everything that we're proposing to put outside are things that would naturally be outside. So we're talking about the material to make the concrete, which is sand and stone. We're talking about the finished product, which is designed to be outside, which is primarily things like culverts and abutments and stairs and things like that that they do here, which are beneficial being outside because of their size and weight, which requires large equipment to do it. So not only do you have to put a lot of building up, you have to put really high-ceiling buildings. Those are extra strength in the floor to do that versus having them stored outside is really reducing the footprint of this operation in terms of its impact if you made it conform to the zoning. And so from that standpoint, I think that's important to keep in mind as you're doing this. In addition, there's a very good screen of natural vegetation along Route 106 that also shields this site. And the grade on the north there, from the abutting property of EJ Prescott in the state of New Hampshire, is also a fairly big difference in grade there that also shields any visual impact as a result of that. And so from that standpoint, we believe not only we meet the hardship criteria for a variance on all these, on all the conditions, but we also meet the other criteria with respect to being not counted to the public interest, the spirit of the ordinance. Everything we're talking about here are things that are allowed to some degree in these zones. So the underlying uses are allowed here. The question that we're asking for relief from is we want to have more intense use in those, in these zones than what is allowed by right under the ordinance. And so from that standpoint, we believe we meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and there's no diminution of property value here. This should have no greater impact to anyone around it than the earlier sand and gravel operations did. And it actually should have less. With that said, we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Questions from the board?
I'm just wondering, Dr. Tracy, if we could see on the city map?
Mm-hmm.
Because I can picture, I can picture...
You're looking for a locust plan?
Yeah.
Where it is in town?
Yeah, so just a, a down look on it. I could picture where it is, because I think...
Is this the old Levi Lat gravel pit?
No, it was Manchester sand and gravel. So it, there was an old house on the edge of the river that was almost falling in to the river that they tore down probably 10, or 10 or so years ago. It's right at the bottom of the hill, right before you cross the bridge to go over the South Cook River.
Okay.
And then you get across and you get to the John Deere dealership and, that's in Pembroke and the little racetrack.
So the, the river is the bound, is the, is the town boundary line?
It is, yes.
For the RO district, I'm kind of surprised there is an RO district there. But where, where, where would the closest residences be?
Across the street on 106. There are a couple of houses that I think tucked into the woods back here across 106.
But this is downhill, isn't it, on that side of the road where this, where you're talking about this, that used to be the sand and gravel pit? The property that you're...
It's, it's very well buffered. There's, there's a big drop in elevation from 106 down into the site.
It's down into the, yeah.
So I know this is, variance doesn't get into this, but you just described to us the, all the manufacturing activity is enclosed inside a manufacturing building on the site.
That's correct.
Yes.
There were, did you see the letter from the town of Pembroke?
We did not.
I'll pass one down to them.
Yeah, sure. Actually, I've read it, so you can have that copy.
You want to raise those issues?
I'll give them the chance to look at it, yeah.
Okay.
If it's in the record, so...
You beat me to it.
Sorry. Sorry. So I guess the two questions that were raised here, and I tried to get some response here with regard to the noise and odor issue, any manufacturing that might produce noise, it's all enclosed.
That's correct.
Yes.
And then, let me ask you another question, may I answer the other one? Could you describe what, if any, state environmental permits you're going to need for the project?
Sure, we'll need an alteration of terrain permit from the state, which is related to ground disturbance and stormwater controls. So, we'll have to, we'll have to meet just as strict regulations as the city of Concord for stormwater control. So any of the runoff from the site will be captured and infiltrated into the ground. We're not allowed to increase any runoff, and the stormwater will be treated before it's infiltrated into the ground.
That's helpful, I think it helps for me anyway, answer the second question with regard to the impacts of the river.
For the benefit of those listening in from home, this had to do with a letter to the zoning board from the town of Pembroke's town planner Carolyn Cronin. And she was, they were notified of the request, and a member of the board had raised concerns relative to the noise and odor, which is why the question about when the manufacturing would take place. And another member had raised concerns about environmental impacts on the Sioux Cook River. That's where the questions came from.
And the site in Regional Drive, manufacturing takes place there now as well as storage?
Yes.
Yes.
So you're moving everything?
Correct.
Other questions from the board? Anything else you'd like us to know?
Not this time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Should I tell the truth, I have nothing but the truth? Will you identify yourselves for the record as you testify, please?
My name is Richard Hill, I live across the street. And this is news to me that they're building a concrete plant next to my house.
Can we find out where Mr. Hill's house is on this map?
So he pointed at it, he said, oh yeah, there's one little building down here on the other side of the street. We live directly across from them, we have a home sits right here, 203. So we look right across to the driveway that he's talking about, that he says that would be the only place where you would see something going on within the concrete plant.
What would you like us to know?
So, so what I'd like to know is a lot of different things. I am definitely concerned about noise when you're putting a concrete plant in there. I'm concerned about how much traffic that's going to add to 106 coming in and out right by my driveway. I'm concerned about the fact it's hard enough to get out now, but the amount of storage they're talking about, I'm not sure if this board's aware of it, but they've already started putting up fences over there. They've already started storing stuff over there at this point. So, I'm kind of surprised going, wait a minute, what's going on here? You know, I could probably live with a little bit of storage of stuff over there, but a concrete plant over there? I'm having a lot of concerns about what that impact would have on my home across the street. So, that would be my huge concern, and like I said, I, this is the first we've heard of it. I mean, the last time I came to this board, we were talking about doing something with leaves.
Oh, right.
Yeah, and then that guy abandoned it apparently, I don't know, but now all of a sudden we've got this group here, out of the blue, building a concrete plant.
You did get notified as an abutter, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm the abutter, I'm right across the street from these guys, so.
How, is there a natural sort of vegetative buffer?
There's a large, yes, that was the 100-year wall or something they called it for the floodplain there. They also had a very large buffer right along the river to protect that, that area from flooding in for any kind of runoff that came off when they were digging out all the dirt out of there. They had to build that natural buffer, 40 to 60 feet in front of the river so that that would stop that water from pouring down into the river in that point. So, so there's just this large kind of pile, it goes all the way up to the top by EJ Prescott.
But how, when, how visible is, are the materials from your property? Like if you, if you, you know, are on your.
Yeah, if I was, I mean, I have, I have natural vegetation between me and the road from my house to the, to the edge of the road. When the leaves go away, yeah, you can see right down that driveway from where my house is, I mean, I can see right down it. But, you know, the idea is that we're talking about building something that is going to probably make a lot of noise. I don't know what it takes, I'm assuming when you do precast, you're shaking things a lot to try and get the precast down. That's going to probably come across to my side, I would suspect, especially if it's that close to me. So, so I have some real concerns, I'm like, I don't know. You know, turning a bunch of leaves didn't seem like it was too big of a deal, but building precast seems like it's a big deal to me, and going to have an impact on my living next door to it.
Did you want to offer anything, sir?
Yes, my concern is the river.
Are you also a neighbor?
He's my, he lives with me.
Oh, okay, I see, yeah.
Your name, sir?
What is the distance, Ron Mahoney. What would be the distance from the river that they can't use all that land up to the river? I know when I built my house, I had to be 100 feet away.
I think it was a 75-foot or 100-foot.
Are you wondering what the setback is?
Yeah.
I don't know, we'll get.
I mean, are they talking storage or putting cement stuff along the river?
No. No, have you seen the plan?
Like I said, this is the first we've heard of it. We hadn't no idea this was, this was going to be happening.
Here's a copy of the plan. This is essentially what you're seeing here, but it's a little easier to read with the paper in front of you. Let's see, where are we, the river runs along here?
So this is the road coming in.
106 is here, the driveway is here, your house would be over here.
Yeah.
We're talking about storage down here.
Okay, so that would be in, behind this big setback is what he's talking about, I see what he's talking about there, yeah.
But the testimony we heard was they would not be building within the setback against the river.
On a cement plant, I'm not familiar with them, but I imagine if you mix cement all day, that everything would have to be cleaned, washed down. Where's this going to go?
We can ask the appellant that question, although I should, I should. I should let you know that the plant itself is not in question, because they are allowed by right to build a precast plant in that section of that zone. So, yes, if they were going to be doing things that were going to pollute the neighborhood, it wouldn't be a zoning issue, but it would be an issue for, of concern to permitting agencies of all sorts. We're only concerned with the storage because it extends into the other zone. And also because of the size of it relative to the building.
The concerns I have is having a cement plant across from my home, that's the concern I have, but.
Which is understandable.
I mean, I can't make arguments, I certainly think there's probably going to be a lot of cars coming in and out of there, so it's going to be a mess trying to get in and out of Route 106, that's for sure. But.
If you're in a neighborhood with other homes, or you're just kind of a single home.
Yeah.
You don't have neighbors.
We've been kind of lucky in that respect. We live in an area where it's not really easy to build, so, and we were able to build 40 years ago, so. But, but certainly is, you know, I'm not opposed to business by any means, I'm just thinking about, what does that impact on me and my living? That's what I'm most concerned about, so.
Questions from the board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Tracy, does this go to planning board or?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. And do they look at noise and traffic?
Oh, yeah.
They do, okay.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition? We noted the letter earlier that came from the town of Pembroke, is there any more, any comment from code enforcement?
Nope.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Error on the part of the chair, fortunately rescued by Mr. Winters. Gentlemen, would you care to add any factual clarification in response to anything you've heard? As opposed to me rushing you offstage when you weren't ready.
The manufacturing operation that the abutter was concerned about is all contained indoors. So, there's not open air in terms of noise being generated outside via V a concrete operation, where you're talking about commercial concrete trucks going in and out of the facility. This is concrete being used for Phoenix precast concrete products. And by virtue of that, everything that occurs with respect to it is going to be indoors. So, they were worried about, you know, we got to wash everything off, it's all going to occur indoors, and it's going to follow the appropriate treatments for that in there. So in terms of impact outside the building, there should be little or no impact outside the building. We have not done a traffic study yet, yet at this point in time, to my knowledge, Chris, right?
No, we have not.
And, you know, currently if you had to ask the existing operation of Regional Drive, is that there's 20 to 30 Phoenix trucks going in and out every day, sometimes two times a day, sometimes three times a day. So, I mean, just to give you a rough gauge of vehicle trips, those are the heavy trucks going in and out of the existing operation. In theory, part of the reason why we're moving is to be able to expand the operation some, but it's not going to be dramatic in that sense. In terms of customers, that depends on the day, how many people come to see them, but it's not necessarily heavy truck traffic, like you have the deliveries being made out of there.
They actually go onto the same road, correct?
They do.
In other words, where they're going now is the road they would be going on in the future?
Yeah. And in terms of the, you know, property here, Chris, do you have an estimate as to how many feet in the plant is? I mean.
From the road or from, well, this is, this is 75 feet, so the conservation easement, so the building itself is, you know, 300 to 400 feet in from the road.
I mean, this is a substantial distance away from the road, you know, to the extent that, you know, there's an issue with the abutter's ability to see down the driveway, we certainly would be happy to discuss putting up a gate and some things that would ameliorate that, to make sure there's truly a visual impact as a result of that. That standpoint, there should be very little impact on the abutter from the operation itself. And in terms of impacts on the river here, I mean, we're complying with everything here. All we're really doing is putting big pieces of concrete sitting outdoors, they're made to sit outdoors. That's about as innocuous a usage you're going to get with respect to that.
This was probably addressed, but is the, do you need a variance because you're using the RO for a portion of the storage? Or would you need a variance even if you stored everything in the industrial part of your lot?
Yeah, go ahead.
We need it, we would need it both ways, and by that I mean, because we're seeing the 1.3 ratio, we need a variance. We also need a variance because we're going more than 40 feet into the RO zone. Okay, so it's, the RO zone would be okay in the first 40 feet, but that corner there on the east side there, you see, there's a line they've drawn, that's the deepest point into the RO zone there at 315 feet, I'll show it to you.
Which is the furthest point to the property.
Right, first point of the property, so, there's a line here, this corner here, that is your, the deepest encroachment on the RO zone, which as you can all see is well back from the 75-foot buffer here along the river. Most cases, well, it would double that.
And that portion of the RO zone is not near any, I'm trying to see how that's even contiguous with the rest of the RO zone that gets over to his lot.
It isn't.
So it's just this sort of isolated.
I mean, you see the line sort of comes in here, does this funny curve.
Oh, the red line is the.
The red line is the property, is the, is the zoning line here, that's the red line. The blue line here is the shoreline district, this other blue line here is the 100-year floodplain, the green line here is that conservation easement and 75-foot facility, upper set that.
So, summarize again why you can't store everything or within the amount allotted into the RO? Is just, you know, too much material necessary for what you're doing?
Too, so too, so too much outdoor storage for the outdoor storage ordinance, as well as the fact we're more than 40 feet in, so the.
But, but, but why do you have to get more than 40 feet in, why can't you store everything you store within your?
I mean, like over here?
Yeah.
Steep slope.
Yeah, it's basically, it's an old gravel pit, so it's a one-to-one slope, and it's all rock.
On that side, it has.
That's why we're not utilizing, we're not utilizing the white areas because it's all very steep slope and all rock, basically.
Just to help them feel better about the river as well, can you just say again what you were going to do with the runoff water and?
Sure, yeah, we're required to have an alteration of terrain permit from the state, which requires us to detain and treat all the runoff that comes off the site before it goes into the river.
And we're not doing direct discharge into the river?
No, absolutely not.
No, 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 sir.
So, I understand the abutter's concern, this is the first step that we go through with the zoning board. There are many steps after this, where there'll be the ability for additional testimony, additional questions and answers. Certainly with the planning board, that's a two-step process that we have to go through, as well as the state permits, both from New Hampshire DES, as well as New Hampshire DOT to get our driveway permit onto 106, which will require a pretty, pretty in-detailed traffic study be done and submitted to DOT. So, long ways to go on this, from this point forward, if we're successful.
Questions from the board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for, are they all variances? I think they are. Four variances related to a proposed precast concrete plant on Sheep Davis Road. One is to extend the storage into the open space, another is to extend the storage into a larger area that would normally be permitted relative to the size of the building that's going to be built, and two requests for screening forgiveness, replaced by existing vegetation, which would function as a screen. We heard testimony from the appellant that there are several parts of the lot that are unbuildable due to slope and soil conditions. And we also heard testimony that the nature of the business is such that building a building to uncover all of this, although that would satisfy the ordinance, would not make any sense from the point of view of their operation. I'm going to start this one with Mr. Monahan.
Yeah, I want to hear what my colleagues say on it. I think it's not particularly impactful.
Not particularly.
Right, it's not impactful, you know, storing concrete structures outside. I think the, many of the abutter's concerns were around what's not before us tonight, which is the manufacturing with those impacts. On the other hand, I, it's, the, those developing it knew what the restrictions were when they decided to purchase the property, so they kind of created their own challenges here by. So they kind of created their own challenges here by moving into a zone that doesn't meet the business plan.
Very good. Mr. Waller?
Yeah, I don't, obviously, the impact issues that were raised by some of the, someone in the audience are going to be met by the planning board. You know, when you look at the map here, this RO zone that it encroaches on, you really, with all the restrictions there between floodplain and easements and so forth, you really can't, I don't see any potential to ever have that developed as a residential, as residential property. So why it's even considered an RO district? And if it wasn't, if it was part of the industrial zone, then many of these issues wouldn't be before us tonight.
Mr. Winters?
The, on the issue of storing further into the RO zone than the ordinance would allow, I think because of the location of this RO zone is so really far away in terms of vision or use compared to the other elements of the RO zone across from 106, we've heard testimony that it wouldn't, storing there wouldn't visually impact the neighbors. And there's, they, because of the slope, they can't store it on the other side. So if they're going to, you know, looking at it now that I have the full, the full scope, I mean, there's barely any portion of the industrial zone on that side, on the non-sloping side, that is other, that is not already part of the building. So if they're going to store anything outside at all, it looks like it's going to have to go into our zone. So I think that's a hardship. As far as the ratio, what's been explained to us before is a key reason for that ratio requirement is they don't want people just using buildable lots for storage because that is not, not the best use of a lot. But here, the storage is, is a key element of the commercial use. And it was reasonably explained that they, you know, they, that, that's a, that's a reasonable ratio to, they need that much outdoor storage. This is mostly weather resistant or weatherproof material. So there'd be, it'd be purposeless to require them to build a building, which then would bring in a whole another host of requirements just to have the right ratio. And then as far as the two buffering variances, we've heard testimony that they're, they would be completely unnecessary because there's already a lot of natural buffering near where anyone, you know, could reasonably see. I do, just for the audiences, because I certainly can understand why the neighbors are, you know, here and have concerns, but as has been said, for the, for the audience's benefit, the planning board is much better suited to deal with issues like noise and traffic because they can get into the nitty gritty, whereas we're just either yea or nay, do they, do they meet the variance or not? So I'd be inclined to grant the variances.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes, I feel the same way. And I think that, you know, with the business itself, we can't comment on any way it's allowed in that zone. The residential, the portion that they're using that's residentially zoned is so far tucked in the back of the property. There's no way it would ever be used for residential purpose. And it's, it's the furthest corner of the property. I don't see a problem with it being allowed to be used for extra storage, considering the size of the product that they're working with. I'm inclined to, and the natural buffers that are around it, I'm familiar with the lot just because of the thousands of times that I've driven up and down the road. And I'm, I'm sure you have a lovely home, but you're probably one of the rare unicorns on that road. But it's, you know, I have no prob, I don't, I don't see a problem with this.
I also am inclined to grant the variances for the reasons that my colleagues already cited. I don't really have anything to add. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'd move to approve all four variances. Do you think we have enough?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant the variances. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variances are granted. That concludes our agenda for this evening. We do have one or two other pieces of business. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes that were submitted?
We got.
You have three sets.
Three sets of minutes, move to approve all three.
Is there a second?
Well, I wasn't here on.
I can't vote on the ones I didn't see.
Oh, they weren't in your package?
No.
Oh, maybe because you weren't, I, I wasn't here on, I can only vote on the ones I was. You can vote when you're not, if you reviewed them.
Oh, is that, I should know that by now.
I did review. Here, you didn't get it?
Do you want us to keep those two cases?
Do you want to try to look, well?
Yes, please.
Chris?
That's on the eighth.
On the eighth.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll try to do that on the eighth, too.
Sorry for the confusion.
And it must, it's the, right now is the first item on the agenda on the eighth.
It is.
Okay, we got lost in the weeds here on the, on the minutes.
I made the motion.
I know you did. Yeah, I would think so because I didn't vote on any of them and I wasn't here for one of them.
Because you were here for all three, you could second it, wouldn't you?
Yes, so I'm abstaining.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Aye.
All in favor?
I'm going to vote on all three, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, we all love the minutes. Now, there was also the rationales that were submitted for.
Sure, move approval on all of those.
Is there a second?
They were awesome. A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? I think we're good on that. Is there anything else?
I really sorry to love you guys.
For the good of the order?
Two things, since we have a second.
So we've got five cases next week.
I think you have five next week, yep. Matt Walsh will likely be your staff next week. For, the first thing is for December, we have nine submitted cases with five that I know of that may be coming in by Monday, which is the deadline. So we're likely looking at two in December as well.
Okay.
Plus the two cases that we just.
Including those.
Including those, okay.
Yep, no, including those.
Second floor.
And the other thing, we, we've been talking as staff, and I know this has been some rumblings from the board, about going to digital instead of delivering the paper packets and having iPads for you here at the meeting so you can scroll through the applications and stuff. Kind of want you to start thinking about that.
It's fine with me.
It's very confusing for the applicants that they file it all online now and then they have to bring in paper copies too. You know what I mean? They're doing both.
No need for it. I'd say let's go with the digital.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
What do you think, Andrew?
You know, it's funny, I, I used, for the first few years, I always, I go to my computer and I, I, I certainly see the benefit of the digital. The paper is, it can be helpful, but.
Well, I mean, is there still an opportunity if we see something that feels like?
If you see something and have a question, we can most certainly ask the applicant. Like, something like this, if you wanted to ask the applicant for, you know, a reduction or a full-size plan on something that has a site like this, that's fine. Most of what you're seeing are, you know, hand-drawn by the homeowners and, you know what I mean? It's pretty easy to see, in my opinion, online, because I don't have pa, I never have paper anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think something like the garage one or driveway change or something like that can easily be done electronically. I think some of these bigger projects, sometimes it's better to have a plan.
I'm the honest one here, I like paper. That's just an old poop thing. I, I can work, if the consent majority is for digital, I can work with it.
Well, I'm ready to take the leap.
We don't, we don't, we don't.
Yeah, I am too, but I, I think we should grandfather Nick in. I mean, he's, he's, he's giving, he's giving the city a lot of service and I can certainly.
We can still make him a paper copy, right?
Point me, there you go.
Hey, now, 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 let's not do anything rash.
Would it help at all if, like, we kept a paper version at the table?
We can, we can ask for one paper copy to have it available at the meeting, sure.
I don't need it in my house.
Actually, that is historically, before the plague.
Yep.
That's more or less the way we worked.
Okay.
There, we would go online, the, the agenda had links to all of the applications. At first, there were some deficiencies in that because some of the larger scale drawings wouldn't be available. So we'd have to have everything available online. But that's the way we did it.
Well, before that, we didn't have the links and we'd have, remember, I used to be distributing them to everybody. I don't have to file.
Yeah, we didn't get the packages at home. Nick's job was to pass the packages.
So the, the links now have the full application. I basically take what they submit, what we produce as your staff memo and that kind of stuff, and make one big PDF so you can scroll through the whole thing in the same order that we deliver it to you in.
Maybe one hard copy.
Okay.
Or you could selectively make hard copies of things that people, you think.
Yep, the maps and those sorts of things.
The maps, yeah. Yeah, and then put them in the middle here, because I'm such a good paper manager. And if people need to see it, we can pass it around if it's not obvious from the.
Okay.
What does city council do? They must get pretty big packages.
Digital.
Digital, what about planning board?
Digital.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can go to you.
So we're last.
We'll, we'll work towards that.
It's environmentally friendly, too. We don't have to give a drive all over town to deliver.
Right, but your loop, because of where you're all situated in town, is literally two hours and 35 miles.
Yeah, so we're geographically representative.
Who are very geog, you are all the way from Bosco into Bo.
I don't, I don't think that's a good use of resources.
Just putting it out there.
Stop driving around finding.
All right.
Finding violations while they're out.
Right, right, don't write duplicating there. Like my lawn.
Much appreciated. I think that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Is my turn up?
No.
Is it up?
Never.
Oh, never.
Are we off the air? I think we're done. Oh, yeah, we need a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Nobody else?
I'm assuming you're not going to, it'll be first of the year before we switch to.
It'll, it'll, yeah, it'll take us a little while to figure out how we're going to do it, if we're going to borrow the planning board's iPads or if we're going to get our own and what. It'll take us a little while to get to it, but.
I, I.